Good morning all, good morning all, give everybody a few more minutes to join.
How have you been, Mr. White?
Tired. Extremely tired. But but alright, not not too bad at all, not too bad at all. How have you been, sir?
Busy. Get to print out a bunch of European legislation after this, after I get off this phone call.
Yeah, I heard, I heard. The stuff you decide to undertake.
Yeah, yeah, it's good, good times.
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, feel like I haven't seen you in a while, Jay. Sounds like you're busy.
Extremely. Extremely. It's not one thing, it's another. And then just when I think that one, that other thing is safe, oh no, something jumps on top of that. But it's okay.
That's, that's how it goes sometimes.
That's why we get paid the small to medium bucks.
Yeah, um, anyway, yeah, uh, let's just kick things off. I had put in, okay, so. Let me organize my thoughts a little, it's like early for me, so, um. I will post the meeting notes in the chat. And please sign in. And so, um, first order of business, um. Can someone scribe, please? Thank you. Okay, so we have. Our office hours scheduled for next, or rather, this week. I was wondering if. We want to postpone that to next week, so that we have extra time to. Find all the speakers and the moderator, I think just any, you'd said you had a couple speakers in mind. Um, the office hours is the building your brand. Topic.
I don't have an opinion, I'll be in Amsterdam next week for the CRA, so I won't be able to participate, so unfortunately.
Hi, Marcela.
Hi. Thank you for joining. Yes, so. Yeah, go ahead.
So are we looking for speakers for the next session of, we've not gotten anyone yet, because. Someone came to my mind, I think we all know her, but I don't know if.
Yeah, if you have someone.
You know Anna Ray?
No, Anna Ray, no, I don't know if I know her.
Anna, she's senior program manager at the Linux Foundation.
Okay, uh, Crowe, you might know her, I, I don't.
Sorry, I was getting asked about something else, who, who was that, Jimmy?
Um, Anna, Anna Jimenez, I think. I hope I didn't murder her name, she's, she's the senior program manager at Linux Foundation.
Um, I don't know her, but I could try to track down a contact for her, if that's what we'd like.
Yeah, I feel, I, I feel like she does a lot in the open source space. So. I, I feel like she's someone that. You know, would love to get to hear her talk about how she does it, because it's everywhere. Let me get her profile, her LinkedIn profile.
Okay, cool, yeah, um.
Yeah, if you can get, um, I'm back, if you can get the second speaker for it, it would be cool, because I really wouldn't want to rescand this one again. Um, but Lexi, Lexi confirms.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, can we get? Can we ask Anna by, I mean, it has to happen today, because it's in two days. That's the only thing, but we do have the questions, we wrote those last time, so. Um, I think we're, we're pretty well prepared, I'm just concerned about the short notice for the speakers.
Yeah, I, I created the social post too, so once this call's over, I can go ahead and publish it. But, uh, yeah, I would want to make sure that we have. A second speaker, if not, worst cases, I can, I can speak and somebody else moderates, just that we do this one.
Yeah, I think another thing we need to start doing is while we are working on. Um, office hours for this month, we are already. Um, you know, reaching out to speakers for the next one, or the next two. So that we give them a lot of time to prepare. And actually have enough time to handle emergencies, like when a speaker say. Um, they wouldn't be available, stuff like that, so we can easily. Replace with, um, some of our speaker, we already have the pipeline. So that we won't have issues of looking for people. Just to base to the session. I could take that open, in a way.
Yeah, if you can go ahead and, and get the next two speakers, or, yeah, the, the, the next two months of speakers, that would be great. I, I think the last call, we were talking about doing the next one on neurodiversion.
Neurodiversity. Uh, we have, so John had, had proposed that, and I think he. I mean, I know it's a topic that's like very close to him, so, um. He, he brought it to us, um. We, we would still need speakers, but I think. Um, we still have the Google form that you created, right, Ijoma, so. Maybe we could just put out a call for speakers, um. Uh, on specific topics. Um, because I, I would like to keep using that, that worked well.
Yeah, we can do that.
And I have two speakers for the one in January that I can. Connect you to, that I think would be great, um, and they, they speak a lot in the space already.
Okay, yeah, I, I like that, um, and in general, since we're on next year's community office hours. Um, I was kind of wondering, like, this year, we've had a theme around, like. Um, sort of. Newcomers and being, um, like welcoming to, um, various people in, um. In the open source space and cybersecurity. Um, did we want to have some kind of theme for next year, like just? I don't know, we could follow the sort of heritage month cycle that exists. Um, that's a little. Uh, some people like that, some people don't, um, I don't, I don't know what everyone's thoughts here are.
I think it makes it easier if we stick to the theme.
Yeah. That's kind of what I was thinking as well. So if we do neurodiversity in January, um. February would be Black Heritage Month, um, at least in the US, so. I think that would be. I would really like to, um, yeah, just. Highlight black folks in cybersecurity and open source.
One of the things that we may want to think about for, uh, next year as well. Um, and, and this is, I, you know, I don't, I don't know how, how. I don't know if this will be needed, but I do know that there's a good chance. That people are going to need a safe space of some sort. Especially since D E and I in organizations is becoming a cost center and not a business requirement. Um, you see that with companies getting rid of their programs left and right. And that, that is, that is creating a, um. It's creating, I, I mean, and I, and you see, it's creating a, a situation where people are getting nervous and scared. Right? We still have our program here, so this might be a place where. And, and I'm not saying that we, I, I, I don't know how to skin that cat, because I don't really want to put more meetings on. Everyone's schedule, and I don't really want to, you know, toss more stuff in the air that we have to sit there and then. And then, and then man, but I, but that is something for us to think about, because we do have this. Platform here that's still standing, where others are, are, are going away. So that's something we should probably keep, uh, keep under our hats. Because I don't know how to skin that cat. Don't, I don't know how to, um.
Yeah, so I, I really like that idea, because you're right, there's, um. There used to be an emphasis on D and I, and that's going away, um. So what are you sort of imagining for a safe space, is it really just, um? Is it sort of reformatting the community office hours, um, is it, um, adding, like you said, maybe adding, um, or? Another monthly meeting, um. For this.
So that's, that's what I'm saying, like, I, I don't, I think our office hours are, are doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. I don't want to take away from that, and I don't want to change that format. But I do think that, that, that we could help. By providing something extra, I just don't know that I want to put extra. I know my plate can't cover it. I can't cover that on my plate, and I know, and I know everyone else is, is just as busy, so I really don't know how to skin that cap, but I do know that we have. Um, a platform here, where we could do some good in that space, if for nothing else, help. Uh, settle stomachs and help calm nerves. Right, um.
I know we're on a recorded piece, but looking at the customers' pain points for this, what are we? How are we trying to alleviate people's nerves and their fear? Besides creating a safe space, like thinking of what their pain points are.
Well. You, you have a few ends of the spectrum in how people consider, um, D E and I programs in organizations. And some of them consider them to be, uh, places where you, you, you have a, a. A hire who may, who may be filling, uh. Some type of a quota in an organization. Right, and then, and then of course, you have where the program, I mean, I, I say. Eighty twenty rule, I mean, this is more like ninety ten, but you have instances where, no. The, the, the absolute right people get the job, they just, they just are afforded the opportunity to even apply or even. Be considered because of these programs. And, and now you, you run a situation, I, I'll give you an example, right, so, so we had, um. You know, we were giving a lot of advice on how the, you know, things to consider in your resume, or things to consider during interviewing. Or things to consider, um, you know. Education wise or, or study wise, well, now, some of the things to be considered are how, and this, and this is horrible. But I'm pretty sure that some of you have been in, in some of these, um, weird. Training exercises like I have, where things as simple as names on resumes. Will trigger whether a resume gets pulled out of a pile of. You know, if you consider ten resumes, you know, eight resumes of having a, a relatable name. Will get pulled before two that don't have a relatable name. Gets pulled, right, so you'll, you'll see stuff like that, how do you discuss that? In a situation right now, where we don't have a D E and I program that's mandating something like. For every five applicants you interview, one of them needs to be. A diverse applicant. These are programs that are actually in place. Right, like, 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 that, those things, and I know that because I, I am on hiring teams, so, so that's in place. They tell you to do that. What happens when they don't tell you to do that anymore, right? So you have a lot of people that come, that, that are already in our sphere that ask us, how do we? And then now we also have to add in, um, these kind of things too, or at least our thoughts about it, uh, go ahead, Marcelo.
No, I, you're raising some really, really good points, I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt, um. But you got me thinking about the panel we did in April. The, which was essentially right, sort of saying. On the one hand, yeah, the D and I working group exists in the Open S S F, we'd like more folks to join, um, on the other hand, um. I wonder if we can try to accomplish some of these. This awareness raising, um, through talks at conferences. Um, creating maybe like meetups at conferences. What, what do you think?
I know, I, yeah, no, that, I mean, that, those, those could work too, absolutely. I mean, FaceTime is always king with some of these things, at least you, you know, you have a. A friendly face, a smile, and somebody who you can lean on, physically lean on, because some of this stuff. Does hit you in, in a certain way where, uh, a virtual touch may, may not be sufficient. Right, you, you, you might need that physical, that smile, that, 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 uh. That, that, some, something to say that, hey, I'm, I'm right here with you, right?
Yeah, when things are being recorded virtually, not many people feel comfortable as well, like speaking their truth.
I don't know, some, some for us to think about going, going into this year, as, um. You know, the, the, the policies begin to change formally. Right, um. We may want to be on the, on the. The, the, the cutting, I guess, the cutting edge of, of, of the, of the change, right?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, because, um, one of the, I think, items for next year, we'd wanted to keep doing is. Conference engagements and, and doing like outreach to local groups, right? Because I, I, I don't think we were able to focus on that this year, so. I think you're absolutely right, that it'll be really important next year. Not that it's stopped being important, right, but, um, yeah. So, uh, is Crowe still on the call?
Yeah.
There, is there, um, like a list somewhere, or like a spreadsheet? Um, where we could see, um, where all the Open S S F conferences are happening next year? So that we can like start doing that outreach to local organizations early.
I can get a list of what the governing board approved for funding, so where we will officially be. That will not include like. Me as an individual contributor or company contributor submitting to a cyber conference, but I can tell you where. The governing board wants us to be, I, I'll track that list down here in a minute.
Thank you, yeah, because I think that was one of the things we. Had some difficulties with this year was sort of. Knowing well in advance where things are going to happen, and then having to organize things a little on short notice. Um, so this could help us prepare like talks, panels, outreach, um, that's kind of my thinking. Go ahead, Paris.
Happy holidays, I'm sorry that I haven't been around, um, I've been traveling. And made it difficult for me to, um, attend. I, I liked, I just wanted to go back on, um, what the gentleman was saying before, before when I just joined. I've been attending this. Group, um, and if I can't help, I, I, I want to help, but I, I think, um, one of the. Challenges has been, is that, um, I attended all things open a couple of weeks ago. Um, and one of the challenges when I meet a lot of people that are. I guess, to say in our catchment group of people that we want to participate in. Open source period is, um, the lack of understanding of how to get engaged. Uh, I feel like a lot of people when they spoke to me, um, they were. Not sure what to do, how to do it, um, you know, I, I invited some of them to say, hey, why don't you just show up at this meeting, for example? Um, and use it as a gateway to figure out where you want to be in open source. Would I, because of the small group we are in terms of active participants, and I would argue that. I'm a casual participant, because I've been to like every meeting, um, since I've been attending, is, um. This issue is across the Linux Foundation, um, and across the industry, how do we identify? How do we, uh, please be patient with me, how do we identify? What is the gateways for people to get engaged, um, because I'm, I'm looking at this. As how do I get engaged in open source, but also how do I get engaged with Open S S F, right? Because this D E I group is housed under. Open S S F, right? Um, and then there are other D E I groups that exist, you know, casually or informally. Um, within some of the other projects that exist. I guess my question is, is. Should this project? Or this program be collaborating with those other ones, so that, um, because I'm assuming those other ones, which I'm not also aware of. To figure out how do we? Make a concerted effort that when we're at Linux Foundation, um, events or Open S S F events. That we're engaging newcomers and how they can actually get involved. And I still have about five or six newcomers to open source period, um, that. Um, I, I said to them, I would be willing to help them figure out how to get engaged. Um, and I don't know if this should be a topic we talk about today, or we should try to schedule a time when we talk about it. And I don't know how people feel about it, but that was, um, one of my experiences, and, and. And I hope, thank you for listening to me, and I hope I'm being clear as to my thoughts.
Yeah, absolutely, um. I think. A, a, allyship is a. Is something that, that, that's a. God, to, to, to. Give. It's, it's like you, you're, you're giving permission. Giving permission for someone to be an ally. And I, that gets difficult, because they, you know, one of the things, that's like, man, you don't need my permission. You, you, you know, hell, you don't need my permission to, to, to be an ally, you, you jump on in. Um, and let your voice be as loud and as boisterous as you want it to be, right? That, that get, that gets difficult too, and that will also, so. God. In being very.
And, and again, I'm not looking for us to figure out solutions or address it, I'm just. Saying, uh, for, if, if, uh, based on what I heard when I just arrived. And based on the conversation a little bit about what you're talking about, what, what do you guys want to do in twenty twenty five? My. Thoughts, my, my, my wish is, is, um, how do we? Do better communication that all they have to do is to show up, right? They don't have to do anything initially, just show up and figure out what's going on. I'm, I personally happen to be a person that does show up, especially in places where I don't even, you know, I'm just interested, and I just show up. Right, but I think a lot of people, um, need to. But I think a lot of people um need to still still let them know that, yes, all you have to do is show up. And um and again, I I I don't know, I don't want to make it a big thing right now. It's just something of feedback that I got from all things open when I when I when I um attended. Um, and and it's the conversation I'm having with a lot of people now that I've been traveling for a lot of things is that people are aware of open source and and um and these different projects and what they are. But they're not clear that for some reason in people's head, they feel like they have to bring something to show up. And what they fail to realize is that whatever your skill sets is always needed in these programs, you just need to show up and hopefully try to find what interests you and participate there. I hope I'm and 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 I'm ready to move on, and thank you for listening to to me. Thanks.
No, no, Pa- Paris, I I understand you. Uh, I understand you completely. I mean, it, you know, it this is this is difficult and it's going to get even harder. It's going to get even harder now because you you know, it it is on, you you are going to be doing this. Uh, not 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 you specifically, but I mean, the 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 individuals you speak to who who want to get engaged. Uh, they don't know how necessarily to get engaged. And they they think they have to bring something, you want to create a welcoming space for them. It but and now more than ever, it's going to be, uh, you know, on those individuals though to um, it it's this, there there is a a play here where I I want to say this the right way. Free will. Right? The the free free will, free will is at play now. There's nothing telling you you have to. There's nothing telling you, there's no, there there's nothing telling you you have to. Not at all. And for all intents and purposes, you would like to hope that one day it's not needed. So nothing's telling you have to. You like to hope that one day it's not needed, but here we are. So now when you come, it really is, A, uh, you have a voice and and you have um, and I'm speaking to to, I'm speaking to allies specifically. You have a voice and you and you have privilege. Feel free to exercise it, right? And um, how how do how do we uh, open up a a a situation that allows for that to occur? Uh, like I said, I don't know how to skin that cat when everyone is already strapped for time. And this here is a completely one hundred percent volunteer effort. So I I I don't want to put, you you know, it's important to us, especially all of us sitting here on this call. It's very important. That's why we're here. I just don't know how to put more on our plates with this a a and and then run the risk of not making sure we're covering down properly on on our, on on our, on our, you know, God, it's it's right, resources, priorities. I I I don't know how to, you know, making sure that you're feeding the monster while you're 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 serving the um feeding the monster while you're serving the the children. I'm 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 playing, I'm playing off of Monsters Inc. here, man. Oh, God. Um, but you guys, you guys get 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 where I'm get where I'm going.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly.
Yeah, I like this. Um, as the conversation is going, there was two things that kind of popped up in my head and it it could be like a short call that we create, but it could be um, something from other organizations that I'm in. They have welcome calls. And it's pretty much like an ask me anything and they'll start off the call with like, oh, welcome to this organization. Here's a quick slideshow of all the resources we have. Um, and then if we do collaborate with, uh, it could be something hosted like thirty minutes, you know, monthly or something. Um, so anybody that is, does want to come, they can come in that call and it's a quick like T L D R of Open S S F. And we can probably coordinate or collaborate with the other D E I organizations in open source. Um, in which one, you know, one week, let's say our group does it, or one month our group does it, next month Cloud Native does it, and so forth. Um, that way you get like a, you get the same information every month. It's somewhere we can direct our newcomers. And then the other open source projects can come in and like we get more visibility to the other ones. And then people could decide.
I like that too.
I like that idea a lot. Um, I feel like
Only only because I brought it up, um, I would be happy to participate. I just, I don't want to take ownership right now because I, in the place I'm in, I don't know if I could take ownership. But I definitely can take tasks and participate and do specific things to make sure that it happens. So I can take ownership of that part. So, um, again, uh, maybe, uh, it's something that we're tabling for today, but maybe we could put on um the calendar for a meeting to specifically talk about that and um we could brainstorm, continue brainstorming and identifying other organizations that, uh, whether they're in Linux Foundation or not, but they're in the open source space. Um, and projects that we could move this idea forward. I I just that also lists us take the strain off of us because maybe we're not sometimes some of our meetings is really a co-meeting with somebody else and then we're sharing responsibility. Because again, um, I see that there's only three or four dedicated one hundred percent people in here. And the only way that you're going to become a more robust community is by us figuring out how to attract more people um in, and I think this is a way to attract more people.
Hundred percent agree with you. And yeah, I think we're all at ten percent, I think, for this, this point. I like the idea of scheduling a meeting, but I think that meeting should be scheduled with the other organizations, the other D E I organizations, and just start the conversation in January with them. So we have
No issue. Maybe um what we can do is put together um a a one paragraph thing saying, this is what we want to do, and this is the reason why we want to to meet. And just pick a date in the sand where a date in time when most of them are not meeting, so that the higher likelihood of them showing up would make sense. And then it's really, um, and then um before the meeting, we can have them reply to us back to the email or whatever way we communicate it back through email, Slack, whatever. Um, can you um share on our thoughts, you know, what would would, you know, maybe we're doing an email thread on what the topics would be of that meeting? Again, I'm just sharing thoughts that worked for me in the past, not saying that we're working this situation.
Well, th- these are good. Don't, don't, don't let them stop. Because we can even just start a thread with everybody and then have a master, a mastermind in January on this with the different groups. And that that would also take off the resource allocation on our side, that issue, because we can uh, my favorite or my favorite phrase is divide and conquer. Oh, um, we can definitely leverage that strategy here. Especially when it comes to the travel too, like if we have a set of talks that we kind of collaborate with all the Open S S F or Linux Foundation open source groups. We can have like a a template site and whoever's attending the conference um can make the talk, you know. Flights are expensive nowadays.
Yeah, very much so. At least most industry conferences waive your registration, you're giving a talk, which is really nice. The other um way that I was hoping for next year to kind of create a space that will draw in newcomers and and will sort of allow openness to become just more open is through the mentorships. I think we had some pretty good feedback on on that, and I was looking at how the C N C F does uh mentorships. And yeah, I I I think we should just start out with a couple of projects. I've even had um a few individuals reach out to me saying, hey, you see, you know, I really love doing mentoring. Let me know how you can participate. Some kind of thinking, maybe we can start with some of those people um that have already volunteered almost. Um, or at least reach out to them and see if they're still available to do that. Just to really get that started because I think once we, we just need to build the engine that then just like keeps running, right? For for the mentorship, so um, I think the date I'm targeting is like the summer, but C N C F actually has like four or three mentorship cycles a year, which is a lot, I think. Um, so for us to even get one that has like good momentum would be yeah, just like fantastic.
The Linux kernel also does a semester base, so they have about three or four.
Okay. Yeah, I I just don't know what the effort is to stand up even one cycle. So that's why I'm like trying to be very optimistic with just the one next year, but
From my experience with that, there's uh working with the Linux Foundation folks, like we're doing through the Linux Foundation mentorship uh program. Uh, standing that up, if there's funding, then there's a financial and legal conversation. Um, there's legal conversation. If the project is like more on the sensitive one, like your hands on it or managing vulnerabilities kind of thing. Um, you publish it, then you'd have to market it out, get people to fill their room or like apply. Uh, reviewing the applicants, reaching out to the applicants, setting up the interviews. Um, final interviews, notifications, and then they typically have tasks uh after for the the Linux Foundation to do, and then they get started. And then during the program, there's typically two reports that they have to give to the Linux Foundation as well. Um, and I'm sure in between that, there's a a various admin work. Updating.
I'm trying to record what you just said. So during the program, um, and this is, I I imagine like the mentee has to give the two reports.
Uh, the mentee will have to give their mentor the reports or whatever items they need, and then they, the mentors will have to like fill it out in the the Linux Foundation.
I see.
Processes. So there's a lot of admin operations behind it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Yijomah.
Okay, so um, I my network disconnected for minutes and I think I missed So I believe we are talking about the mentorship program, right, and how it's going to run?
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was given a recap of of um my experience with it from the mentor side. Standing up a process.
Okay, so I wanted to ask um, what are some of the goals of the mentorship?
Good.
Okay, continue please.
Sorry, it was just a a silent gap there. Um, the goal would be based on the project and what they want out of it. Um, and then what the mentee, of course, would want out of uh the mentorship. Like if they just want someone that they can chat to, then that would be different. They want like a technical project and that would be different.
Oh, okay. So that means we are going to be collaborating with different open source projects. Which, which means, um, let's see. I'm just trying to, okay, because I'm currently on a mentorship, not really mentorship per se. Um, program with GitHub and GitHub Public Goods. So how um they did it was, we had, it's a six months program. The first three months was just more of um them trying to mentors build our skills when it comes to contributing to GitHub Public Goods. So we learned about how to use GitHub, Git. Uh, you know, all of that stuff, and then they now paired us with different GitHub Public Goods. Now, currently I'm working with UNICEF. So I wanted to know if it's the same thing that we want to do. So have pair them with different mentors and probably different projects. So which means that your mentor-mentee relationship or whatever would, and what the program would cover would depend on a specific need of a particular project or a specific need of a particular mentee. So I I just wanted to know how it's going to, you know, pan out.
Yeah, I would, I don't want to create a whole new process, so I would want to leverage something that's already preexisting. Um, so we might need to reach out a little bit more to the the Linux Foundation uh mentorship individuals. But from when I set it up, the mentor decided like the work of what was needed. Of what they wanted, like maybe they need someone to come in and handle some technical debt. Maybe they might just want to do a mentorship where they just ease folks into the space. Um, but that that I think would be a further conversation further down the line, unless we're looking to create a whole another different type of process or program.
So I think we can leverage on what's what's already working and just probably add. Sorry, Marcela, you were saying something?
No, no, please finish your thought.
Okay, so I think we can leverage on what's already working and just try to make it better. Uh, I think that would work. So if if we're going to have mentors, are we, okay, let's say, because you mentioned, um based on a specific project. So can we, let's say we are um, let's, which project am I going to use as an example? Let's say C N C F. Would the mentors come from that project? Because I believe if it's based on a project, having mentors from those projects, they would be, they will be great to mentor people based on their needs and, you know, based on what they think um the mentees might actually need. Or would it just be random people that want to, you know, mentor? We could have those as well. Well, I'm just saying, is there um, a way we could have mentors from these projects? From these active projects?
The way I envision it would be mentors from active projects, so that um it also helps funnel people into the projects. So if you're interested in cloud, and you know, we'll have a cloud native uh mentorship program and you can sign up and apply, and then they'll have dedicated resources on their side to walk you through uh whatever it is their goal is.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, what I wanted to add actually is um within Open S S F, there's, um, I mean, I think the plan right now is to find a couple of active projects that um, want to mentor and have um technical projects that they can offer. So there's already that sort of desire from from the projects end to um bring So there's already that sort of desire from from the project's end to um, bring in um, uh, new folks. Um, I was also just thinking, though, that um, there's no reason why we as a working group couldn't open up a mentorship that does the like skill building or um, kind of, you know, kind of general um, mentorship that we've that we've been discussing, right? That says just, I just want to have someone to talk to, and like maybe one or two of us sort of make ourselves um, uh, available to volunteer for a summer in in that way. And we just say this is like a different type of mentorship through LFX. I don't know if LFX would actually uh, accept that sort of um, project, but um, that was just an idea that I had. Um, we we are a uh, open SSF technical initiative officially, so
Yay.
if we are um, trying to uh, that, yeah, we're just not the uh, coding side of tech at the moment, but it doesn't mean we couldn't also try to um, participate. Um, yeah. Uh, you had mentioned um, just any of that. Um, we should have, we should consider funding, so does the open SSF need to sponsor? Did, like essentially, is there an expectation that open SSF will have some funds to cover uh, the projects that that are under, or or that get accepted into the mentorship?
Uh, no, you can have mentorships without a a stifen.
Hmm.
And then the stifens based on like the budget, the budget that the project decides that they wanna um, put. They also have like a minimum, but their stifen is is not uh, required.
Uh, okay. Yeah, cause I mean, personally, I'd rather offer stipends um, if, if we can. Um, so the reason I ask is because I think there's a call for funding. I forget if it's still open. There's like a call for funds um, to the open SSF um, that was going out. It might already have passed. Um.
I believe Q four passed, but
Yeah.
Q one's right around the corner.
Yeah, so um, if we can start preparing like a funding application for Q one, so that we get funds. I guess Q two is April, May, June timeframe. That might actually work out pretty well. Um, I don't know how soon the LFX or the L of mentorship needs those stipends, but um.
I can, let me see, cause there was like a whole uh, a whole webpage focused on it.
Yeah, there's a lot going on on that webpage, so I was like having some hard time navigating the page, but um.
That's the link for the stifen. You know, also posted on here.
Thank you.
Um. Yeah, it looks like a basement of six thousand US. A minimum of three thousand and a maximum of six.
I see. So is that for the like two month span of of the internship?
Uh, yeah, I think it's just based on the the stand of the the mentorship.
Okay. That's actually lower than I expected. Um. Okay, that, I think that's something we can definitely work with, and I don't see why like open SSF would be opposed to funding this um, this application. Um, yeah, that was kind of the only like logistical thing I could think of. Um, I can try to find the, let's see, um. There's like a, oops, um. There's a funding application? Excuse me, there's a funding application template, I think. When I request process. Um. Okay, yeah, we have not added the twenty twenty five cycle, so I think that's something that's gonna have to go in there soon. Um.
Can you share that link? I drop it in the doc?
Yeah.
I I know we're at the top of the hour, so uh, Iyoma, can you get the second speaker for um, Thursday? See you, Crook. I'm just going through the the action items. If uh, um, Iyoma, you can get uh, Anna for Thursday, and then if not, I I'll I'll speak just so we can have it. Uh, the other thing was the tack updates. Are we good on that? Is there anything else, or is there a meeting we have to attend?
Yeah.
There isn't a meeting. Yeah, I I think we're good. Um.
Okay.
We were gonna get uh, I'll share my screen for one more second. Um. We're supposed to get at least five approvals. Um. And I believe
We should be good.
Yeah, we have five, so um. I don't know if you wanna go ahead and merge it. Yeah.
Okay, I just
Yeah, I think I can't just merge it. Um, since I have the
You have the power.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, I don't know. Um.
Well, ask for forgiveness if I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think they have an issue with me just like merging my own thing when we have the the needed approvals. So, yay, that went in. Um. Quick overview. I think we actually managed to cover a lot of the things for next year. Um. The panel discussions, I mean, that's the current, sorry. Um. Tip of the month, we didn't talk about today, but mentorship we covered. And, oh, this contributing guidelines. I think these will kind of come out of the mentorship as well. Um. I I don't think this will be like a huge effort. Um, but famous last words, so. Like, um, yeah.
And then uh, for next year, we wanted to do the welcome calls, so the action item was one paragraph, what, why to meet? Uh, Paris, do you wanna work on with me on that one to identify groups, write the paragraph, set out a date, and start that to get that conversation with the other groups? Divide and conquer.
I'm sorry, my video went off, and I was holding my thumb up, but yes, I'm good.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. Perfect, thank you. And then our last action item is about the mentorship for funding. Um. Marcela and Iyoma, you wanna tag team on that one?
Yeah, I think um, let's take that one on. Um.
All right, that's the action items on the list. They've been assigned.
Yeah, um, I think there's still like an outstanding approval for the PR that you opened with a template, but um, I think it'll look good to me, so um, yeah.
Yeah. That is this one. I just took Paris's work and and put it into PR. Yes, if you can take a look at that, and then I'll share out the social link today right after this call.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, and uh, enjoy December, or it turns out to be.
Yep.
There you go.
Bye.
Bye.